Time being six o'clock, I'll call this meeting to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please Patty.
Dan.
Here.
Here.
Wanda.
Here.
Joe.
Here. Wanda, can you hear us?
So, there we go. Now I'm here.
Thank you.
Roll call Wanda.
Yeah.
Stay here Wanda.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, good.
This time, does anybody have a financial or non-financial conflict of interest?
No.
I do not.
No.
No. That I would take approval of the agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Item four, public comment, would anybody in the audience care to make a public comment at this time?
Absolutely.
Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Move to item five, approve new malt beverage license.
And this is for amazing acres.
This is for amazing acres, do you wanna?
I cannot hear you.
We're on item five malt beverage for amazing acres.
Thank you.
The applicants are here if they want to speak on this at all. You don't have to. If there's questions, I'll call you up. Any questions from the board for the applicants?
No.
I do not.
I would entertain a motion.
Move approval of the malt license.
Motion in a second for approval, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Good luck to you guys.
Thank you for coming in.
We'll get a license from the state and then it'll be mailed out to you.
You bet. Thank you. Item six, approved federal bridge removal work agreement.
This is, I applied for this last year, it's one of the federal highway infrastructure program grants, applied for a removal. We have a bridge over on four twenty-eight. South of three oh four. Bridge has been not in use since like two thousand eight or nine. So this is part of the program, we applied for it and got it, the county is on the hook for eighteen point zero five percent. The estimated cost of the removal is a hundred thousand dollars.
Are we removing this ourselves or?
No, this is contracted all out, the state put it out, puts it out for bid. It's all done through the state.
Is this a larger project or are they digging out the pylons or what?
It should be.
It costs so much.
Taking out the, the bridge itself, if I remember right, the bridge is roughly a ninety footer. It's an old trust bridge and then they also removed the abutments and put the dirt back to the grade, back to how it was.
There's no salvage value to the bridge of I-beams or anything like that, is there?
Not for us.
Okay. Well, I'm glad the state's picking up most of the cost.
I'd entertain a motion.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank Mike.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, item seven, mosquito abatement contract.
I'll, I'll just have the copy in your mail slot then.
I think the contracts were given to you guys.
Yep, we got them in the back.
Standard contract, same as every year. It's that time of year.
Thank you Mike.
Just requires signatures.
Okay.
Patty, can we do just one motion for all of them?
Yep. Yes.
Okay, I would move approval of the mosquito abatement contracts with our small municipalities.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve mosquito abatement contracts, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
With it being so dry, hopefully those mosquitoes aren't too bad yet.
I haven't had any calls, last year was an amazing year, I didn't get one single call.
One call, well, I hope we get some rain and you do get calls, I hate to say it.
Jim, we don't do any mosquito abatement on the small portion of Irene that's in the county, do we?
No, Irene takes care of their own, Irene and Wakana share a machine.
Thank you.
Thanks Jim.
Thank you Jim. Okay. We're gonna move past item eight, we're a little early and they are not here yet.
Uh, they're not coming tonight, I got a call from Chris and she had, well, there's this family emergency and she wasn't, but I can, she sent me something to kind of go over, if that's okay with the board, so it, this is from the center. And they are very appreciative of the county support over the last few years, particularly during the pandemic. The center has really stepped up and just in the community in Yankton County has provided over fifty-one thousand meals to our homebound seniors, it's pretty amazing, the support that they have. And these seniors that the Meals on Wheels program goes to are, are usually low income and it may be the only healthy meal that they get all week. That's a big part of what the senior center does. Meals have increased significantly, nearly ten percent, about nine percent this past year and they, it's mostly run on volunteers. The center donates over ten thousand meals each year to seniors who are food insecure and that has a significant cost. Oh, yeah, they've, the center has saved nearly two million dollars in healthcare costs to our med, due to the Medicare Part D and the volunteers to help those seniors sign up and they just appreciate the county's continued support of our seniors with the county contribution each year, so.
Great. Thank you Dan.
Yep.
We will move on to, we're gonna bypass item nine at this point. But I think we can go on to ten. Start with the plaits.
Good.
Six plaits tonight, first one being the plat of Smith Evergreens acre in the northeast quarter of section one, township ninety-four north, range fifty-four west to the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Which township is this one?
Ballin'.
Ballin', yeah.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Second one's a plat of lot two, block one, law overlook subdivision in northeast quarter of section eighteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Second.
Is that Utica South then Gary?
What's that?
Is that Utica South then?
Uh, let me look here, I believe so.
Okay, we got a motion and a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next one is plat of lot two, block one. Replat of lots two and thirteen are whitetail run in the southeast quarter and the northeast quarter of section sixteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota, hereafter to be known as lot twenty-one, whitetail run in the southeast quarter, the northeast quarter of six, section sixteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota. Yeah.
It looks to be on the diagram that it's lot two and lot thirteen, uh, lot two and lot eleven.
No, eleven is to the west, to the east there, so it was originally thirteen, two and thirteen.
Was there a motion already?
No motion yet.
The, the only, only thing I see on, oh, it's just a replat, I was just looking number of acres is zero point.
Yeah, they added the two together.
Replat them together. And it's five point nine eight acres together.
Correct.
Got it.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next one's plat of lots one and two of Elmer's addition in the southeast quarter of section twenty-five, township ninety-six north, range fifty-five west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Motion to approve by Fox, is there a second?
A second.
Motion in a second, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
Next one's plat of Paulson Homestead in the northwest quarter, the southwest quarter in that a portion of northeast quarter of the southwest quarter lying west of this, of South Dakota Highway fifty-two and section fourteen, township ninety-three north, range fifty-seven west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
Move approval.
Motion by Clemish, second by Fox, to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Passes.
Last one's the plat of lot fifteen being the replat of lots eleven and twelve, block three Beaver Beach Park in the northwest quarter, the southeast quarter of section twenty-seven, township ninety-five north, range fifty-six west of the fifth principal meridian, Yankton County, South Dakota.
They're combining two lots here or?
Yeah, the lot line was going through a, one of the buildings basically.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Thank you Gary. Okay, we'll move on to item eleven. You ready?
Yeah.
Let's do it. Oh, well, if you wanna wait, we can.
We can wait a few minutes, we can do some of these other things Paul.
Sure. Sure, yeah, we can wait if they're coming. Okay, uh, let's just jump down. Let's knock out employee picnic, I think we've talked in the past. Having barbecue of some sort in the park, let's pick a date and go for it, I think department head meetings, they said, I think suggested a Friday right after work, I think it could be a weekday, but I did call the parks. There's pretty much a shelter open somewhere every Friday from here on out. So I think if we picked the date and it was maybe pick two, uh, A and a B, just in case, but I don't know. I would say.
We're looking in July or August.
What about September?
September would be cooler.
That's what I'm thinking.
Is that harvest season?
Too early.
It would be early.
Hard to tell. It's gonna rain or not.
So Fridays in September, two, nine, sixteen, twenty-three and thirty.
Oh, we could be doing beans in the last part of the month typically.
I would say the ninth.
Ninth.
Would work for me, otherwise.
Cause we'll have state convention.
The ninth, oh, no, no, it's that one.
The, is that the week of the twelfth, state convention?
Yeah, we usually move on Sundays.
So, wanna do the ninth?
Anybody having the input or care, I guess on the date?
I, I really, I don't have a preference, any Friday.
Doesn't work for me, other than that, I'm probably open on anything, so.
Dan?
Whether it be July or August.
Sixteenth won't work for me.
Sixteenth doesn't work for Dan, Wanda, does the ninth work for you?
Of July?
Of September.
Sure, we'll go with the yes. I don't have my, my calendar, so we'll just go with the yes.
Okay, so that's gonna be our date and details can probably follow, we probably don't need to decide exactly what time and all of that right now, so.
No, I think the ninth and it'll be shortly after business hours and get the rest of it later.
Okay. Alrighty.
Have a, a party planning committee or something.
There you go.
Okay. Is there more? Okay. It doesn't matter, we can move on to, let's go to item fourteen.
About, about thirteen minutes.
Sorry, thirteen, whoops, jumping all over, thirteen, approved June ninth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion is second to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed?
I will abstain, I was not there.
Sure. Motion passes. Four, zero with one abstain. Okay, now, item fourteen, claims.
I would move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Auditor, treasurer and pooled cash reports.
Move approval.
Second.
Second. Ah, feature.
Keep it going.
You're dreaming, you're way behind.
I'm always lollygagging.
Motion in a second to approve, further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes.
And that workman's comp coverage, they were just, um, some that Paul left off.
Just update that list.
Yep, and Roger just said we need to approve these two.
Sure. Any questions from the board, if not, I'd entertain a motion.
Move approval to add these folks to our workman comp coverage.
Second.
Motion in a second to to approve the workman's comp coverage or list of volunteers, further discussion.
I guess my only question is, is Ms. Muckbold's already a county employee, does she need this coverage or will the coverage she has as employee covered it? Isn't she an employee in equalization?
But I think, don't you think it's still be pretty safe?
Probably not part of her job duties for equal.
Okay, I, I was just asking the question, so. Okay. 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 No. Yeah, no, that, that makes sense, I figured if we could save a few dollars, but makes sense to have the, those, these people covered if they're helping out with disasters, so.
Alrighty. Okay, motion in a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes. Guess we could hold off on public comment as well, just get through the meeting, commissioner updates.
Eight county meeting, successful in Menno. Speak with the commissioners from this area, some of the topics that was discussed was the CO2 pipeline coming through, that'll affect some of the counties to the north of us more than it will us at this time. Another one is the summer study for jails coming through and there's actually gonna be some people coming down and looking at our jail later next month. For those of you who don't know, that will be whether or not the state is gonna grant money for lack of a better term, for regional jail facilities. But in Yankton's case, Yankton has built our jail on our own without state funding, so we wanna make sure we're not left out of the discussion, so they're gonna come and tour our jail and gonna provide them with input later this month.
Thank you Dan.
Or next month, rather, yeah.
Do you have a date on when's the meeting in Vermillion?
He wasn't there. For eight county, you mean?
No, no, the jail meeting, because they're meeting in Vermillion.
Oh. That'll be separate than us, yeah.
Okay. Cause I know they, cause they had announced the, the actual meetings of the committee and I thought they were meeting in Vermillion and I assumed they'd do it at the same time and come over and look at our jail.
This is, that's, this is separate, one of the members who's on that task force is gonna be in town at that time, so he is gonna come and tour it on his own, so.
It's July, oh, it's July twenty-first.
And that's for the private meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't need to be in on that one, but I thought the, the meeting in Vermillion, probably someone from our commission should go to that meeting. Okay, gotcha, thank you for clarifying that. So, and we did touch on at that meeting, the potential for counties to join the state health insurance plan a little bit. Discuss maybe advancing some road projects into this year from next year because things are only gonna be more expensive next year, so if people had the time to do it, to get that done, et cetera, so. Otherwise, it was a good meeting, it was well attended, there's a lot of people there. I don't have anything else.
Great. Wanda, do you have any updates you wanted to share?
Uh, not over the phone.
Okay. Okay, I don't have anything new, so we will close commissioner updates. You guys might be up. Okay, so we're gonna circle back to item eleven.
These are new map.
Thank you.
Oh, maybe I need to know that.
Okay. Anyway, I'm here tonight, just as a, more of a conversation and we'll try to get through this as quick as we can. Uh, but there's some, the concerns that we're starting to have as public safety is that the way the development is going on toward the lake area. And don't get me wrong, we're not here to say no more building, we're here for all, in favor of more construction, you know, more property tax, stuff like that. We'd like to get some input or at least get some information to you guys that could maybe consider some things that are going on that is getting to be kind of what we see, kind of a problem. And so the first topic that I wanna bring up, or the maps I handed out to you are the trick, the camp, I call the camper villages, the camper sites uh, that we've identified, in your book there are fourteen, the big page is the one right off of Riverside Acres, where there's the five campsites, all in one acre, or one area there, and there's four hundred thirty camps in that area. And we'll talk a little bit more in detail on that when we get going here, but the first thing I wanna talk to you about is rural addresses. When we've been going out helping with different projects across out in the county, we're seeing that a lot of places don't have the rural nine-one-one address sign or the address sign isn't posted in the right place. And what I mean by that is, is that some people have long driveways and it's on their house. And yet, the driveway, the main road that you would be driving by their driveway needs to be the location of the sign. Uh, I put a copy of ordinance eleven in your package uh, that talks about the county adopted back and I believe it was eighty-nine. When we did the nine-one-one, started the nine-one-one, there was also administrative rules that were put in place by the state and how things had to be done. But I don't know the proper way, we've done a lot of small, you know, articles on Facebook, you know, talk to different people, how we can get them to put up. Right now, currently, we have fifteen signs that are new construction that Gary has sent us over that some of them are two years old, that I haven't picked them up yet. And it's almost like, we have a thing now, Bill started here a couple of weeks ago saying you got twenty days or it's, you're in penalty or violation of the ordinance. Uh, but it kinda like, really doesn't matter, I mean, they just want, they need the number to get the utilities and the lumber company to drop the lumber off. So, part of the process, I'm asking, and I think the amount of people that are here with me tonight would agree, is that when planning and zoning and when those, I mean, it, there's gotta be something attached to, I mean, Gary and Bill do everything they possibly can to get it done. But yet, we're issuing a permit, to me, the permit can't go out till the sign goes up, now that's just my opinion. Because that way, there's some way to enforce that, now I know they, that process probably can't happen that way. But to me, if somebody starts doing construction out there and gets hurt, we have no idea. Now granted, if it's on Buck Street, I'm gonna use that name, cause that's very familiar, gonna be talked about tonight a lot. Is that, well, if we drive along Buck, we'll probably find somebody. But is that what we, how we really wanna base our emergency services on, or, you know, somebody's having a heart attack or somebody's being held up by a gun, or things of that nature. That's the things that we're looking at, so we're taking any ideas. Uh, but one of the things that I would like to see, more conversation on this matter and how we can better maybe educate or how we get the stuff out to the people to get their signs up. They've got a really slick deal on their, on the county's website on planning and zoning, you can go on and apply for a sign, it's all online done. We get the email, we order it, we send an email back out to them saying that your, your sign's ready to be picked up and for the most part, a lot of them do pick it up, but we still got signs there that come here, in a couple of weeks, we'll be going out and actually hand delivering them to clear off the bench to start all over again. We don't put them up, I mean, if that's something that maybe we need to start doing, you know, not that I want. You know, not that I want to start pounding posts, but if I have to, I have no problem if it helps the emergency services get the job done. Cause that's, just takes a couple of minutes. It's a short post. You know, but it's an option. So that's the first thing that I wanted to talk to you about, about tonight was the rural addressing. There's a lot of places that whether it's new construction or even the old construction, according to the ordinance. Residents ten years ago, if you lose your sign, you're responsible for getting it put back up. And that's designed to be a certain type of sign. Green background, white reflective, and all this stuff goes along with it. So we're asking that they put it up because it might be life or death based on if this sign is in here. So questions on that? I don't know if you guys got some input you want to put in if you're sitting here. We've got Larry Nichols here from the fire department and Steve Hawkins, well, everyone else, Steve.
I believe talking to some other counties have done similar things and I, I think the Boy Scouts have gone out and ended, ended up putting some of these up. Or there's groups that get together and this is their service project for the year because, you know, you're never going to get, not everybody's going to pick them up and we, we know that under any situation, but yeah, we can't be.
They might if you find them.
If you find them?
Find them. Twenty-five dollars a month after the first thirty days.
That, that is an, that is an option.
That would certainly encourage people to do it. They have to come in at some point in time and get their tags for their vehicle or they get their permit. It can't, it's not that hard to pick up a sign.
How many signs are we talking about that don't get picked up?
Right now, like I said, I've got fifteen sitting at the office.
Fifteen, and that's over a span of how many years?
Right now, if I had, I think there are ten that are within the last three to four months that are still not be picked up. The other ones are we, every year we try to get rid of them at the end of the year.
Majority of them are from the last few months, okay.
Yeah, so they're, and they're building. I mean, and that's the thing, they're, they're.
Are they a single poster, double post?
Single post. It's just a single post in the ground.
I, I like Wanda's idea, find them a hundred and fifty bucks, because if we send you out to put it up, it's going to cost us a lot of money.
And I mean, I don't have a, I mean, in all honesty, not that I want to take away from Mike, or maybe Mike wants to do it, but if we send somebody out to put in a sign, put that on a fee with Gary when they apply for it, that we go and put the sign up and it's done and over with. And then it's up to responsibility owner. But this, I mean, we don't need to make this decision tonight, but this is something that I really strongly believe that we need to, because there are a lot of signs that are disappearing, you know.
Well, the fir, the first person that's going to complain is when somebody gets hurt and somebody dies, it's going to be the county's fault that there's no sign.
Yep.
So why, why is it the county's fault when Joe Smith can pick up his sign and put it in? It's one post, two bolts, two washers, two nuts, fifteen minutes on a bad day.
Gary, I, I don't suppose there's enough time between the time the sign comes in, when somebody comes and gets a building permit and pick it up. I suppose the signs take a week or so to get in, how, how long? So there's no way we could really have it where they get it with the building permit.
Yeah, I mean, it's relatively cheap.
Perhaps putting something on the building permit, whereas if you don't pick up the sign in thirty, thirty days, you know, you'll be assessed a fee of X. Yeah, no, that's a good idea.
I would almost say, I don't know if it'd be a county nightmare, but you charge them and once it's up, you refund them.
I'd say they got thirty days if they don't.
Or just give them thirty days to do it. And if they don't do it, we've got a list of who's got a building permit, boom, you got a problem. They do that if I don't license my car. Oh, look, she doesn't have her tag. Let's pull her over and give her a hundred and sixty dollars check. Not that that's ever happened.
I'm hearing overwhelming support to do something.
So maybe we can get it in your guise, yeah. Gary and I have worked on something, how we can do at the office and then bring it back to you and get your approval on. But it's, like I said, tonight is, we weren't looking for policies or planning. It's more of an awareness and what we can do to move forward. All right, so the next thing we got, or the, what I call again, they might be a lot of other names, but they're called the camping, camper villages. And they're popping up out west, all over the place out there. And one of the concerns that we have is that the, it isn't so much the addressing of the campsite. I mean, we're getting that. So if it's being addressed off of a road, we know how to get in there. But now we've got eighty-five campsites to figure out. And the, the people that put them up had them all addressed. I mean, ninety percent of them are addressed on the meter pole that's on the lot or the dr, little road that you park your camper on. But they're visible and the camper's not there. But when the camper comes in, it hides them. So you no longer see that sign again. Lot of the, we've been in contact, I've been out personally talking to a lot of these sites and they're either putting them on when they build their little awning or like patio outside trying to get something out there. But a lot of them aren't doing that. And I'm not saying we can go back out there and enforce anything to the existing ones. But is there something that maybe we can talk about when somebody else wants to build a new one stating that this needs to be moved out there? Or out to a location as you can see it. In your packet, I gave you a copy where we order our nine-one-one signs. They actually priced us for six dollars and it doesn't include a post. But it looks like this. Six dollars, it's just, it meets DOT requirements and you can have a sign. I realize for six, eighty-five locations or a hundred, that gets kind of spendy. But also it's your patrons, you know, we, I hear this, well, we'll be there to let you in or wave where you at, well. That don't work, especially at midnight. And you see, I probably commented way too many times, it's midnight, put yourself in our shoes where we're going. And it's these folks here, the ambulance and the fire guys and gals that are going out doing this stuff, trying to find these places at nighttime, and it's hard to do. So if we had a means to, to identify that. But again, it's something that I feel that, we've talked with Gary, you know, but it's something that I think needs to be put at the planning and zoning side of it to where there's, we don't want to change the ordinance. But maybe there can be a condition, and I don't know if I'm using the right term, that when you want to put up a trailer court or park or whatever you want to call it, camper site, that you need to have a sign that's right along the road, the main thorough, or however you want to call it. But again, this is something that it's getting really bad. Like I said, on that big map, there's four hundred and thirty-two campsites just in that location alone. And if you see the roads going to it, one of them, you got to go down Buck, get on Doe and then come in from the west side. And we're getting these maps out to the people, emergency services as quick as we can. But then we're, we're also got to be able to identify the locations. And we've been working really hard with Gary and District Three and stuff like that to get these done. So, and the people have been very receptive to us when we've gone out there and got addresses. We've got two or three yet that are out in the, I call out in the trees up on a road with maybe ten sites of the flat ground they put campers in. We got to get numbers for them yet. We're trying to make contact with those and we still haven't found that one from Iowa yet. But anyway, we're working on that. So, but again, that's something that I would like to, you know, I should say, when I, excuse me, when I say I would like to see, we would like to see something to where there's a little more enforcement on that, where we can get in there to make sure we don't miss somebody when they're, where they needed. The other thing, item number three that I got is what I call gated communities or neighborhoods. We've got one where the camper sites are gated. And that gentleman we spoke to, I was, I talked to him personally, went out there one day and he has no problem putting on a, what we call a Knox box. And Larry has brought one here with us. Maybe a lot of you have seen it. There's several different ways of doing it. Oops, sorry. But there's, the key to the building is in it and then a special key, just one key fits all, if you will. The fire department has it and EMS has one. But they're able to get into them. And there's other means. But again, that would be a condition that would have to be put on a permit if they decide to lock it. The other side is, we're getting areas out there where we've got beautiful homes where, I mean, it's just like and they're tired of people driving through to look, so they're going to gate it. Well, now how do we get in? You know, you've got to have a fob or a key. Now, that box could have a key, a fob. And I don't know how we're going to force go into that process. And maybe it's just going out to talk to them and maybe they're more willing to do it. But we need to have, so if somebody's doing a development and it's going to becoming a community, a develop, a locked community in the pre-plan, if you will, I think is that proper, is that we have a means to address that right up front. So people know there's going to be that cost. You know, we had one gentleman said, well, just drive through the gates, I'll fix it. Well, now we've got a thousand dollars worth of damage to our vehicles. You know, and I'm not saying we wouldn't do that if somebody's dying in there, but it's the idea, we shouldn't have to do that. And for emergency services, I think we need to have some form of, you know, and like Larry, in, in your packet, there is one where you've got to actually have the key in your controller. It isn't necessarily a box, it's just the key goes in, opens the gate. But it's that Knox box type key or a switch, I would think you referred to. And there was a copy of an ordinance the city uses for Knox boxes. Now, I don't know if that's something that maybe you guys want to look at adopting in the county for those kind of communities as they come forward.
How many of those do we have right now?
Right now, I know of four.
We have four.
That are going. And one more coming in, they're planning on putting a gate.
And, and I would say, you know, a simple education factor is, I'm sure the citizens, if you want law enforcement or fire or emergency services, you know, this is something that's going to be needed to happen. I, I agree totally on future development. That should be a discussion, but I think it's a, a no-brainer. People would want law enforcement. It just, that's not something they think about. They, yeah, I, it's.
I mean, we'll do what we got to do to get in there, but I mean, yeah, but it's the idea. I'm sure the ones that we have now. The ones that we have now are, are more than willing to cooperate. But it's the idea that we need to do something, in my opinion, and these guys' opinion out here, for the future. Because we're growing and the call for service is getting more and more and we just need to know how we're going to accommodate that.
But it's not always, even cooperation is just not always thought of.
Sure.
So that's part of this discussion or why you're here too.
Right. And, and the, the last part of the conversation is exactly what you talked about. I think that, and again, in, in my, in my opinion, and it is, and I think Larry, I, I have the same opinion is that when there is probably ninety to ninety-five percent of the building permits or CUPs that you guys issue have no effect on what's going on in our day-to-day stuff. But there's some of those things out there that happen that like, oh my gosh, there's this now brand-new factory going up and we don't have the fire protection to protect it, or it's going to need sprinkler systems and we don't have the water to do it. Not saying that we're going to stop it, but we need to be able to prepare. And one of the questions that I had and, and is that, and Gary, I, I haven't really talked a lot about Gary, I just kind of dawned on me. Is that when, not here, but the other day, is that when we get our, when somebody applies for a nine-one-one address sign, Bill approves it or approves of the application and it's sent out to District Three automatically by email to get an address. And then we, once it goes into the system, Aaron and I both get an email saying, please order this sign for that address. Is there a way that the fire chief or like Larry, your assistant chief around and maybe EMS or myself could get the email when there is a new CUP? I hope I'm using these terms right. And building permit issued so that we can look and say, oh, no big deal. Because we don't want to have to bother Gary or Bill every time they do something, oh, we got to send Larry or we got to send Paul something. If it would just be automatic. I mean, just a question. And that way it'd be, it'd be so much easier. And then there's not, well, I didn't get this, I didn't know, and I wish I would have because now it doesn't mean building code. Or there's, they needed another fire escape or, you know, just stuff like that. There's nobody stopping anything or wanting to stop anything. It's just want to make sure that we can deal with what's going on. Cause it's getting to be more and more.
I think the only potential headache with that one, I think it's easy to get the email automatically generated. It would be, that's when a building permit goes though. And a lot of these things you probably want to see at the CUP level. Cause the CUP is going to get granted. And then it's all approved.
Right.
And then they're going to come forward for the building permit. It's kind of too little, too late. If you, you know, if you see something that.
So is there a way that when somebody comes in that we can be notified? When I say we, you know, just a small mailing list of people. That there's going to be a CUP coming up and we can kind of come and look at, maybe we got to come up and talk to Gary or Bill before that happens. When I say we, it's more likely going to be Larry and most of the stuff in his area. But it's just the idea that we have this knowing.
Right.
You know, because, you know, it, it's the idea that we're getting, I mean, we don't have water systems out in the lake area, you know. We're going to have all water to fight fire. And now, not saying we don't, everything's fine, but we need a plan for that. And having these ideas. Questions, Larry? I mean, am I saying anything wrong or you agreeing or?
You want to come forward, Larry? You want to come up here, please? Wanda, Wanda can't hear you. She's squirming, I bet.
Knock into the.
So we tried a sheet that we put in the, through Gary's office prior to the building permit. And it was a pre-planned sheet right down to the contractor, this building, the house or the building or whatever. So we could contact them if there was a building code issue or fire code issue like that. And it worked, it started to work pretty good. And then as, as a planning office upgraded their system and went electronic, people don't pay attention to the link. And we're, I was the liaison for the other fire departments with their agreement. And every once in a while, if I find out about a building that's going into the area, I forward it to them and talk to them and say, hey, you got exposure, it's going in your area or whatever. Sure. So that's, that's what we're trying to get ahead of in our protection areas. So like Paul said, we know what we're getting into on that ten percent that isn't residential, you know.
Right.
That makes sense, why you guys know that. But I, I don't know if just saying everything with the conditional use, conditional uses of hearings and there's notifications, but there's also in commercial districts and lakeside commercial districts, a lot of things are permitted uses, fireworks stands, motels, garages. Now, if we only look at the conditional use permit process, you might be missing out on some other things you'd want to be involved in. So it might even need to, to be a little bit more than that, you know.
The building permit's easy. I mean, it just adds you to a list and you get them all.
The only, the only problem in, that you, you just said earlier is the building permit process. If it's, if it is a conditional use permit and it's already gone through the process, there's no more adding conditions because that's already done. But as a permitted use, for example, commercial district hotels are permitted use. Now, that would work in that situation, but it's not everywhere.
I'm just saying you probably have to just add it, for building permits and then.
Anytime they ask, ask for a building permit, just automatically make them do it.
Well, part of the issue though, Wanda, is what if we approve a CUP? Let's just say it's for a campground. If we approve a CUP and then the building permit goes out and Larry sees something that either is an error or even, hey, this would make our life a lot easier and it's not going to negatively impact you if that conversation's had earlier. It, it can get implemented. But once the building permits issued, they're, dirt's moved and they're moving and.
That's, in the city, we review that stuff before the building permits issue. Obviously, we have a building inspector to help with that. So that's something you guys are lacking, but.
You weren't, we're not unique. And I believe a lot, most of the counties in South Dakota don't have any type of building codes where the municipalities do. And so that's kind of an.
Well, I think for the interim, we can get them added to the email list, the building permit email list. And then.
And they do send me, Bill sends me building permits every month.
And so then, maybe work with Gary or Bill or both on how an easy way to update you on upcoming CUPs. Cause I know how that goes. You can, like I say, start and then like two years from now you don't get them all or maybe, you know, I know how that happens.
Well, we have the check that they, they're required to do that people are just checking.
Sure. And then a lot of this other stuff, I think we can keep in mind for new permitting, long-term. We do need to address campsites and all that in the ordinance anyway. So it should be integrated in, but short-term, I think we need to be cognizant of the potential issues. And it's not just campsites, like you say, it could be a manufacturing plant, could be whatever. My question was on your lock deal. You have a key on the inside of that box. Is that, is that correct?
Right, key or fob or whatever.
So what happens if you go out there and it's not in there?
The only way that that key can come out of that box is if the user EMS, fire didn't put it back. Didn't put it back. Because no one else can access that box, can't even get a key made for it. I've tried, just nonchalantly walked into the area locksmith, handed in the key and I said, can you make me ten of these? He looked at it, he goes, nope, it's patented key, I can't touch it, can't even buy it, so it was, it was just a test. So the keys. Once they're in there, just like the back of the county building here, they've been in there since the day the county building was built, we've used them a handful of times for alarms. And whatever, um, yeah, the only people that can can get in there and actually, um, my position is. The administrator of that. Um, it's, it's, it's a lot of work because we got. Under two hundred boxes in town right now that we're trying to keep up with. Keys, and most of them are pretty good about calling us, but out in the county, we probably. We have a half a dozen boxes on apartment buildings and the core. You know, and then hopefully we're gonna get some more here, um, also in that Paul mentioned switch. That can be put into like Kurt Oliver's development would be a good example, he's got an electric box. At the time, we talked about a. Key box, but they came out with a switch that's a lot cheaper and our key will still activate that switch. And now they come out with padlocks that only our key fits. So I know develop, I know a concern that I just got hit with today about at the end of Smoke Road, there's a gate. There's gonna be a gate. And it's got a lock on it. And we have fires up there. So I'm gonna have to go talk to him about putting a lock on there, otherwise we're gonna be out there. Cutting every time. Hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks Larry, uh, the other, the other thing with the the CUP and the building permits that. That I kind of like to see, and I don't know how we would do this, and I know it's it's gonna be a more cost to the. To the people who develop, but you know, we've got all these people out there and we got no place for them to go during a storm. And I don't know how to approach that, I mean, can we do mitigation, can we do? Uh, we're actually right now looking at storm shelters that you can move. The different of, or, uh, arenas or events. That would hold like a couple hundred people, see if we could maybe get FEMA money to help pay for it. But, you know, every time, you know, if you've got four hundred and thirty people out there in that one campground, where do they all go? Now, some of them do have some form of shelter, but not everybody does. The night that we had the the siren, the sirens blew. Uh, that Sunday night during Memorial Day evening. You could see the train of cars coming into town as a siren was blowing because there was no place to go. Or they didn't know where to go and they came into town. Now, granted, I'm sure some of them went home, cause they were just out camping. But there was a lot of people, one of the facilities here in town was full of people. Where in case we would have had a disaster, you don't want that place to be full, cause we needed it for the disaster people. Cause they all went to the hospital. So I'm not saying that we gotta say if you put up a, uh, a campsite with eighty-six people. You gotta put up a big storm shelter, but we need to consider talking about that when these developments come. Because that's getting to be a problem. Out everywhere, everywhere, it isn't just there. So, but other than that, that's all I got.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Jake Cutson, I'm a, my board member of Yankton Row Fire District. Uh, another thing that we have to consider, uh, maybe informational for you guys is, um, if we get a fire call. Out there at the lake, well, we're probably there, Larry could probably tell us better, but anywhere from twelve to sixteen minutes, we'll probably be at the fire. For somebody will be there. And we usually, we first of all, we take an engine out there and just up around a thousand gallons of water. The only problem is. When we start, that engine pumps two hundred and fifty gallons a minute, so you have four minutes of water. And we have to have tankers in behind that. But we're getting some of these campgrounds out there. That there is no way to get a tanker truck within a quarter mile of some of these campgrounds. I mean, Buck Street is sixteen feet wide. You can't get tankers past it, you can't get them turned around. Dough streets, even worse, and there's no cul-de-sacs, there's nothing, there's, there's no way to get access to it. So I'm thinking Friday or Saturday night last week, if we get hot, dry wind, thirty mile an hour wind and somebody forgets to put out a campfire. And at two o'clock in the morning, we get a, start a fire on the south end of that thing. There is absolutely no way we're gonna get enough water to try to put something like that out, close enough. I mean, the the volunteers are gonna try. But we need roads that go around these things and we need twenty-four foot wide roads, I mean. That's just what we need for fire protection and we have to, we have to haul the water there, I mean. BY Water is not gonna supply us, so we know that we're gonna have to get tankers there. Um, but we need a way to get them past the engines and around a circle, so we can get them. Uh, back on the street and coming back for more water, cause it doesn't take long to get rid of water.
Might want more than three inches of gravel on them.
Yeah, you want more than three inches of gravel on them too. I mean, i- i- they should be asphalt streets out there with all them cars and people that are gonna be out there, I mean, that's just crazy. And, uh, I mean, Paul might not want you to make campgrounds, spend money for storm shelters, but I would make that a. Something in the CUP, cause that's. I've been out there at the lake a couple times when storms come up and in a camper and, and I don't wanna do that again. So, anyway, just another thing to think about, we need the streets to go around and squares and so we can get our engines and tankers. Access to some of them places, cause it's gonna be. If a fire starts out there around them five campground areas, it's gonna be rather interesting time to get there. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Well, I think we all need to be cognizant of these issues and. In the short term, like I said, and then we can. Try to get something in an ordinance addressed. You guys wanna work on signs and whatever, come up with something. I think you got support here, so. Okay. Thank you. That we will. Backtrack to item nine. Notice of adoption, second reading.
This is second hearing to per, second. Regarding the proposed amendments to Yankton County Ordinance twenty twenty definitions, Article Five Agricultural District. Article Six Low Density Residential District. Article Seven Moderate Density Res- Residential District. Article Eight High Density Residential District. Article Ten Commercial District, Article Eleven Lakeside Commercial District. Article Twelve Rural Transitional District. Article Thirteen Plan Unit Development. Article Fifteen Supplementary District Regulations, Article Seventeen Administrative Procedure and Enforcement. Article Nineteen Board of Adjustment, Article Twenty-One Duties. On Matters of Appeal and Article Twenty-Eight Subdivision Regulations.
Gary. This time I had opened it up to, uh, public comment, does anybody in the audience care to make comment on these changes? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. Bring it back to the board.
I got, I got some questions on here, you know, I know we're, we're talking about scratching the definition of swimming pool. I know that swimming pools have. The way the definition is now, a portable swimming pool requires a a permit. Or squa- scratching swimming pools from residential, but we're keeping it in ag and. Rural Transitional, I I. I don't think it's a good idea to scratch the definition, but then keep it as permitted uses in those two, so we'll have to. Do one or the other. Cause the.
I thought we already got rid of it in a.
No, it's permitted use, and so I I really. I think, I think the example is of, of moving it to a permitted accessory use is, is a good idea. Eliminating it altogether, I don't know if I like that idea as well, and the reason I say that. Is then when somebody comes in and they wants a swim, a swimming pool. You know, according to the, you know, five eleven, six eleven, seven eleven, all of those, if it isn't listed specifically. As a principal use, accessory use or conditional use. By our own ordinance, it says it's prohibited. So I think a good solution to that would be to keep swimming pools. As a permitted accessory use in all districts. And I would personally like to see the definition changed of swimming pool, kept. But changed to. Eliminate, uh, the fact that the, these guys who are getting these sw- uh, blow up pools or these portable pools from Walmart. For two hundred dollars and they take them down, but those aren't regulated, and if we would. To me, it'd be simple, it says right here, a water filled, permanent constructed, um, we eliminate portable. Having the depth of more than twenty-four inches, change that to sixty inches. And, uh, above ground, having a depth of more than thirty-six inches, change that. To sixty inches, so it would only regulate the actual permanently constructed swimming pools. And those could be done as a permitted accessory use, which eliminates the conditional use permit process.
So. And I understand, I I guess I didn't catch that it was still listed under agriculture, so I do agree, we can't remove the definition and just let me finish here. And you state that if something isn't specifically listed under permitted, you can't do it.
Condition use.
So, can I put a trampoline in my backyard? That's not listed anywhere. Can I put up one of those blow up castles in my backyard? That's not listed anywhere, so I I I think there's a line where you can't list. Everything. But if it is a de- definition, I can kind of see that. So could we? In this case, leave the definition for now. And the next set of changes, take out the definition and take out swimming pools in a, and just strike it from the whole ordinance. You see where I struggle with? If it's not listed as permitted, I mean, you gotta list a crap ton of stuff. In your ordinance to be allowed to do it, because there's all kinds of stuff you could do on your property that someone could say, well, that's not in the ordinance. Wow, that doesn't mean you can't do it.
I guess my, my, the issue I have is where it's, it's in as a permitted use in two districts, but. Then eliminated in all the other ones. We need to, we need to get that.
Hundred percent agree with that, we should have struck it from all of them, yes.
Swimming pools can be a pretty big.
Can we do that now?
I'm talking about big structures, I mean, do we wanna have a building permit for, you know, a. Pretty good sized swimming pool in a residential, I, it, it's probably. I'm, I'm fine either way, it doesn't, doesn't matter, to me, I think the heartache was. That it was a conditional use permit process, which is what people didn't like, and I can understand that, but. Us having it as a. You know, a a permitted use where you come in, get your building permit and go about it, I don't think that's. You know, so that would probably be reasonable.
Which? Articles, is it listed as permitted A?
Article Five and and Rural Transitional.
And RT. Because then the. That implies that it's not permitted. In residential.
Well, I I, I just want uniformity and that's, that's all I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm I'm fine either way. Yes, as I recall, is is these portable pools. That people were getting from Walmart, they said, why do I have to get a conditional use permit for that? And I agree, I don't believe anybody ever said a, a permanent, you know, large, hard sided pool. I don't recall anybody having an issue coming in with that for, for a CUP. Uh, there's.
I don't.
Yeah, then.
It's your own backyard.
So, so really, the, the only place that it would still be listed is under agriculture permitted. Accessory uses and I don't know, we probably can't strike it right now, or can we? Did you, did you hear all that conversation?
I think it was an oversight, the discussion was to strike swimming pools altogether, so we have the definition struck. And we've removed it from all the CUPs and all the articles. But we had previously moved it to permitted uses. In agriculture and RT, so that was overlooked. So right now, we have the. Striking the definition of swimming pools, but yet we call them out as permitted uses in two articles.
Just one.
Or one article?
It's not in transitional.
So just in one, so the question is, can we? Leave the definition struck and can we strike it from permitted uses in ag at this reading?
Okay, so in agriculture, then we would just strike the number seventeen swimming pools.
Yeah, that.
And then the word swimming pool is nowhere in the ordinance. And take the definition out, so.
Sounds like a good idea, yeah, I I would like, I would like that, I think that would be, uh, the best. Best case, and then there's no reference to it at all.
Okay, okay, yeah, thanks Dan, I missed that too. Any other questions, comments on?
Yeah, on, on our, the Article Five one, when it talks about, I'm getting there, sorry. Talks about the minimum lot requirements. Uh, it talks about number six, non-conforming lots of record, so a single family, under twenty acres, fifty feet. All other allowable uses, fifty feet, I mean, they're exactly the same. So why, I guess, why are we calling out single family dwelling and then all allowable uses? Why don't we just say all allowable uses? And the minimum front yard, side yard, rear yard, instead of having two categories. I guess I don't know what we achieve by that, let's just call it all uses to be fair and.
And I'm, I'm fine.
Yeah. Okay. Are we fine with that? Did you get that Gary, we're just, instead of having, are we okay with that? Well, it, we could just, yeah, just say all uses, um, under twenty acres, minimum lot. Minimum front yard fifty, side yard ten, rear yard fifty. Cause that's basically what it is, it just simplifying that.
Anything else? Do we need to?
Need motion?
We need a motion.
I guess the, my question I got with, uh, the replats, so we're gonna allow. Okay, I guess like, that makes sense, that's all I had, thanks.
So we have two proposed changes, one is strike seventeen in Article Five in reference to swimming pools. And the other one is also Article Five, uh, there's a table for. Non-conforming lots with reduced setbacks to simplify that chart into one, one line for all allowed uses. I'd entertain a motion.
And move approval of the proposed changes to the ordinance.
Second.
Motion in a second. To approve the proposed changes with the corrections.
With the corrections.
Corrections. Further discussion. Roll call vote, please, Betty.
Sherry.
Yes.
Don.
Yes.
Wanda. Dan.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Do you know what she time she left? I'll put it seven.
Do in the motion for, do I have to put the changes in there or just changes presented?
I think we should put them in there minutes. When you get those, you want to just send them to Patty? Great, thank you. Okay. Unless I'm missing something, we'll move on to item fifteen, public comment. Does anybody in the audience care to make a public comment? Hearing and seeing none, public comment is closed. We've done commissioner updates. We asked that we. Make a motion to go to executive session. So what?
For litigation personnel?
Motion is second to go to executive session for litigation pursuant to self codified law one dash twenty-five dash two, sub paragraph three. And personnel per self codified law one dash twenty-five dash two, sub paragraph one. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. We are now in executive session. Doing so good. It entertained a motion to come out of executive session.
So move.
Second.
Further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are now out of executive session. No action will be taken as a result of executive session. Items for next meeting.
July.
July fifth.
So we'll have the West Eleventh Road deal will be on there and that's.
That I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.